I'm in. I'm gonna jump in later, though. I'm gonna log off and come back.
That's perfectly fine. Just wanted to make sure it was working. Thank you.
Hello?
Hello?
Yes, hi. This is Eric from Cable. Can you make me the host, please?
Will do.
Thank you. Thank you. Hi there, everyone. It's Eric from PAC. I'm just getting things all set up and I will turn the meeting over to the superintendent in just a second.
Thank you.
Okay, who would like, I'm sorry that it's been taking a while. I just got it going. Who would like it, superintendent? Okay? I apologize for the delay. Sorry about that. We're ready to go whenever you are. Thank you.
Mr. Schoolenbrini is having a difficult time logging in. So hopefully he'll be with us in a few minutes. Here he is.
Dr. Burnham, are you ready?
I am, and we are both streaming and recording.
Great, thank you. All right, it's 7:04 PM. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. I'll turn it over to Dr. Burnham for member access.
As a preliminary matter, this is Dr. Burnham, Superintendent of Schools. I will do a roll call to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Vice Chair, Mr. Brian Leighton.
Yes.
Ms. Sophie Shapiro.
Yes.
Mr. Schoolenbrini.
Finally, yes! So sorry.
This evening, the Chair, Mrs. Carol Ashambo, and Secretary, Mrs. Laura Kelly are not present, nor do I see Sean Delaney, our student representative. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Recording Secretary, Ms. Susan Summers.
Yes.
Our Business Manager, Mr. Michael Cassidy.
Yes.
Turkey Hill Elementary School Teacher, Mrs. Rhonda Connery.
Yes.
And our Health and Safety Officer, Mrs. Katie McGuire.
Yes.
All right, I'll turn it over to you now, Mr. Leighton.
Thank you. Good evening. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and is being broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel and streaming on Facebook Live. And this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee is being conducted remotely. In accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, public meetings may be conducted remotely. The order, which you can find posted on the town website on the COVID-19 Information Center page, access through the town manager's webpage allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is affordable, is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Lunenburg School Committee is convening by telephone conference, video conference via Zoom app, Facebook Live, etc., as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. For Zoom meetings, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that you take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Meeting business ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Brian Leighton, and the Vice Chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda after they conclude their remarks. I will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. For items with public comment, after members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all the public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. So turning back to the agenda, the first item on the agenda is the Chair's report. For those who celebrate Star Wars Day, may the fourth be with you. Also, our annual town meeting is a Saturday at 9:00 AM. With the recent news and in the Supreme Court, people who are feeling like they want to get engaged in politics, I encourage you to participate in local politics and go to the annual town meeting. Also, the annual town election is on May 21st at the TCP Building. Next item on the agenda is public comments. Do we have any public comment from the public? Raise your hand, your virtual hand, your live hand. Not seeing any, any public comment from the committee? Seeing none. Next item on the agenda is to review and approve minutes. We have the workshop minutes from March 23rd, 2022. Anybody have any comments, corrections? I'll accept the motion to accept the minutes from March 23rd, 2022.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to accept.
Thank you, Anthony.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, I think we're ready for a roll call vote.
Mr. Schoolenbrini?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Next item on the agenda is to review and approve line item transfers.
There are none this evening.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. I'll turn it over to Dr. Burnham.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to make you all aware of a special recognition for some of our students that occurred. Last week, we had three high school students who were recognized for their work with Project 351 with a citation presented by Representative Cena. Congratulations to Emily Begley, Sophia Spray, and Max Mayer. The primary school AC project update. We did receive the peer review from an independent engineering company for the primary school AC capital project. The electrical assessment was lacking from DiGiorgio and therefore the opinion in the peer review is limited. Mr. Cassidy and I have discussed the options for this project with the town manager. We are recommending to keep this project in the capital plan for the annual town meeting this Saturday. Mr. Cassidy and I are proposing that the district hire an electrical engineer to assess the electrical service and condenser capacity. If a new electrical service is not required, we can move forward and publicly bid the project, assuming that it is approved at town meeting, the funding for this project. If a complete new upgraded electrical service is required and the project costs cannot be fully funded with the amount included in the capital plan, assuming that it is approved, we will take no assuming that it is approved, we will take no action on the project and seek additional funding at the fall town meeting if that cost overage cannot be funded solely by the school department budget. Communication survey. Thank you to all the families who participated in our communication survey. You've all provided very helpful feedback that we will be using to make improvements. And we will be presenting the results of that survey later in this meeting this evening. A few reminders. May 1st was National Principals' Day. This week is Teacher Appreciation Week. May 6th is School Lunch Hero Day. The week of May 6th is School Nurse Week. As Mr. Leighton already reminded everyone, on the 7th, the Saturday, the annual town meeting at the Middle High School at 9:00 AM. The week running May 11th through the 18th is National Police Officers' Week. So we would recognize our SRO, Mr. McNamara, Officer McNamara, and McNamara, and of course Hank. On the 18th is our next school committee meeting. Tentative start at 6:00 PM. That meeting will be via Zoom. On the 19th, we'll have our senior department awards. The 20th is the seniors' last day of school. On the 21st, we have town election and the high school prom. We're happy to have a prom. After a couple of years of being unable to do that, it's nice to have that event back. On the 30th, there will be a Memorial Day Ceremony at Veterans Park at 10:00 AM. And a couple of important June reminders focused on our seniors. The 1st of June will be our Senior Modicade and Senior Breakfast. On the 2nd is Community Scholarship Night. And graduation will be on the 4th of June. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Dr. Burnham? Anybody, did anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, moving on, the Student Representative Report. I don't believe we have a student representative tonight.
We do not.
So next item on the agenda is New Business Action. Initial approval of Nature's Classroom Trip.
So I'd invite Mrs. Connery to share with you information about Nature's Classroom.
Hi, Rhonda Connery. And we haven't been able to do Nature's Classroom away now for the past few years. So we wanted to reinstitute it. It's something we've done for over 35 years. We did the last two years do Nature's Classroom at the school where we had it on grounds and the people came to us. It was called Nature on Wheels and it was pretty good, but not quite the same as going away and doing it overnight. So what we decided to do this year, we used to go out to Beckett, Mass. To make it a little bit more comfortable for parents and everybody else in the community. What we decided this year to do was to go to Groton, Massachusetts, to Groton Woods. It's close by. Used to take us two hours to get to Beckett. This would be a pro, what I'm hoping to do is during this whole thing, there'll be two options for students. So parents that are comfortable with sending their children away still after COVID and everything else, we still offer the overnight option, which would be a total of 450 to go. We're still waiting to hear for the buses. We assume it might be a total of about no more than $475 for parents to pay. The second option we wanted to provide, because we know parents will be maybe a little bit more nervous than they used to be, is the option to be able to bring their child daily to the program. It's a short ride. We wouldn't be able to offer buses. But parents could maybe carpool or we could give that option and give a list of parents and see if they wanted to work something out. Parents would have to drop their child off about nine o'clock in the morning and then do a pickup at 3:00 in the afternoon. So the kids would still be able to experience the classes during the day. They'd be able to do like a lunch and experience what the meals are like there. And still get the whole class and team building activity things together. The only thing they'd miss is at night. But again, I think some parents may not be comfortable yet sending their children away for an overnight. So that's why this year we provided two options. So that was pretty much what we were going for approval for.
Thank you, Ms. Connery.
The half-day option would be 265, just the cost of going.
Thank you. Does any school committee member have any questions or comments? Sophie?
I'll just add a comment that I think that it's great that you're adding the second option and I'm sure you remember, Mrs. Connery, I went to Nature's Classroom in fifth grade and it was an absolutely amazing experience. I think everyone who goes agrees, like me and my siblings still talk about it and at this point I went like, I don't know, 10 years ago or something. It's really, it's a great experience and I think it was definitely a cornerstone in building my appreciation for the environment now. So I think it's great that we're adding this extra option so that more kids can be involved in the program.
Thank you.
Anthony?
Well, I don't know what it is.
So Nature's Classroom is where you, it's a week away usually. And the students are still learning in a hands-on environment. So they're still taking part in classes. That's why it's called Nature's Classroom. But it's outdoors classes. So we have things like water rocket launching where they learn all about the pressure and what goes into the building of the rocket. So they're learning all the different physics and things like that at an age appropriate level. They get to make their own. They get together. They build them together in groups of two or three. And then they launch them and it's just, it's a great, that's one of the great ones. They do things called like Predator Prey where it's a huge all-grade level game of tag and they learn about the food chain. So they start off with like tons of bugs, but by the end there's no bugs left and there's a bunch of eagles. Because they all got eaten. So like, it's a lot of science-based, but they also do a lot of social studies and history as well. Like we have a revolution. We've done that as a class before. And they're small. They're not huge classes. There's about classes with like 12 children and they're mixed abilities and heterogeneous. So again, they're usually working together to create something in their learning. But there's like a gamut of classes. We've done hot air balloons. Pond probe where they go down and they play in the pond and learn and see beavers and dams and things like that. I don't know what Groton will have, but I'm sure they'll have similar things. And then at night, when they stay over, the learning literally goes all day. We usually eat about five o'clock and end at six. And then we still do things at night. So we'll do like, one night's usually like a science fair. We used to do nights when Sophie was there of Underground Railroad, but now we do like the Oregon Trail with Westward Expansion because that's part of the social studies curriculum. Other nights, it's just the last night we're there, we've done Thursday Night Live where it's just team building and fun. And the kids do skits that they make up together in their field groups. So it's a lot of, like I said, the, these groups of kids that aren't all from the same homeroom. They're from all the classes together. And they bond with us and they bond together really well within that week. We find when we do it early in the year, the kids are ready to come back. They're ready to learn. They've grown up a little bit. Crazy to think in a week that happens, but it does. They've become more responsible, independent. And like I said, the best thing is just the team building activities as well that they take out of it. But it is a lot of science, math. They make like mini structures, a variety of classes. Not usually writing. They don't want to do that.
Thanks, Ms. Connery. I do appreciate the work you're putting into this to plan it. I like the creativity of doing it local too, to provide more options. Definitely a memorable experience for the students. I still remember it when I went to North Middlesex doing it as well. I did have a question, or I think a lot of parents have concerns too about just post-COVID field trips. What type of insurance is available or opportunities available if a student gets sick? And how clearly is that communicated to parents?
So usually in the past, when children have gotten sick, they've got, parents have gotten reimbursed. So the child is, they're doing it overnight. Because that happens every once in a while. We've had kids get the flu or usually the parents are called right away as soon as the child has any symptoms of being sick. And then the parents can come get them. Again, Groton's really close, so it's easy to get to. And then the parents would be reimbursed the rest of the cost that the child was not able to attend. And I'm sure it will be the exact same thing as it's been in the past. As far as there's medics there, so we're not on our own. We have the chance to either have, which we can decide whether to have like a real registered nurse there or whether to have an EMT. The cost is more for a nurse. In the past, we've used a nurse if we have kids that might be like diabetic or have a higher physical need to make sure, like usually if they have to have an injection, we need to have a nurse. But usually all other things have been dealt with by an EMT before. So we always have an EMT onboard and they have walkie-talkies and they're there 24 hours.
Thank you. Is there any additional questions, comments, or discussion? Then I'll look for a motion for approval.
Thank you.
Sophie?
I'll make a motion to approve the Nature's Classroom Trip.
One second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I think we're ready for a roll call vote.
Mr. School and Briney?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes. Thank you. So the motion that's passed, the approval for Nature's Classroom Trip has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is the District Handbook Substitute and Custodial.
So you have a draft version of a substitute handbook and you have a draft version of the custodial handbook. They're both still in draft form. The substitute handbook is largely new. I understand that the district did have one at one time. But this has been created just in the last year and a half or two. And the custodial handbook hadn't been officially updated and brought back before the school committee in the last several years. So you have that before you as well. Again, they're in draft form. There would be a final review for typos, edits, formatting, and the like. But we wanted just to have you review these handbooks just for the content and, and to know that we have these handbooks in the district.
Any member have any questions or comments? So it looks like we can pass over this for action.
You can accept them and then they will no longer be drafts and we'll go through those final edits and formatting and they'll be posted for, for the next year.
So we're looking for an action to accept the handbook?
Yes.
There's a motion to accept the handbooks as presented. Anthony?
I'll make a motion to accept the handbooks.
Sophie? Any further discussion? Ready for a roll call vote?
Okay, Mr. School and Briney?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes. As a unanimous, we have accepted the District Handbook Substitute and Custodial. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Next item on the agenda, action item, appreciation resolutions.
Yes, it is that time of year again where we acknowledge and thank the many varied employees in the district. So you do have a school committee resolution in your packet that perhaps somebody could volunteer to read. I can share the screen if you would prefer.
It might be good for the audience to see it too. I can, I can read through as it's presented on the screen. Lunenburg Public Schools Resolutions. Whereas teachers mold future citizens through guidance and education, teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students and performing community service. And our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community. Therefore, be it resolved that Lunenburg School Committee proclaimed May 2nd to the 6th, 2022, to be National Teacher Appreciation Week and May 3rd to be National Teacher Appreciation Day. Whereas principals are expected to be educational visionaries, instructional leaders, assessment experts, disciplinarians, community builders, public relations experts, et cetera, entrusted with the education and development of young people, the most valuable resource. Principles set the academic tone for their schools and work collaboratively with teachers to develop and maintain high curriculum standards and set performance goals and objectives for schools to achieve educational excellence. Therefore, be it resolved in honor of the service of all principals and to recognize the importance of their school leadership so that every child has access to a high-quality education. The day of May 1st, 2022 is hereby designated in Lunenburg to be National Principals' Day. Whereas school nurses support in the health and educational success of children and youth by providing access to care, the school community celebrates and acknowledges the accomplishments of school nurses and their efforts of meeting the needs of today's students by improving the delivery of healthcare in our schools and offers gratitude for the district's school nurses who contribute to our local communities by helping students stay healthy in schools and ready to learn. Therefore, be it resolved that the Lunenburg School Committee proclaims May 6th through 12th, 2022, to be School Nurses Week and strongly encourages all members of our community to join with, with it and personally expressing appreciation to our nurses for their dedication and devotion to their work. Whereas paraprofessionals play a vital role in the successful operation of our school district and the dedicated and valuable contributions of all the fine people who fill these important positions are integral and to the successful daily operation of our public schools. Therefore, be it resolved that the Lunenburg School Committee proclaimed April 1st, 2022, to be Paraprofessional Appreciation Day. Whereas the staff of the district's school meals and nutrition department are committed to providing helpful, nutritious meals to the soup, to the district's children and the men and women who prepare and serve school meals help nurture our children through their daily interaction and support. Therefore, be it resolved that Lunenburg School District expresses its deep appreciation to these valuable food service employees and commends their good work on behalf of children the day of Friday, May 6th, 2022, as School Lunch Hero Day. Whereas the administrative professionals in the Lunenburg Public Schools play key roles, bear many responsibilities and are crucial to the efficient functioning and smooth running of day-to-day operations as they assist educators, principals, students, and parents. Therefore, be it resolved that Administrative Professionals Day be observed on April 27th, 2022. Whereas our custo, our custodians are constantly responsible for all Lunenburg Public School facilities. They are the first employees to arrive in the morning and the last employees to leave at night. And their contribution is critical in allowing for the smooth daily operation of the school. Therefore, be it resolved, the School Committee of the Lunenburg Public Schools on behalf of all students and personnel does hereby proclaim the day of October 2nd, 2022, as Custodian Appreciation Day for Lunenburg Public Schools, urging all parents, students, and employees to join in congratulating all custodians for jobs well done and in saying thank you. Whereas coaches represent stability, consistency, and direction in the lives of many athletes, coaches, a friend, mentor, and an advocate that helps demonstrate to athlete, to athletes teamwork, discipline, and healthy attitude toward competition. Therefore, be it resolved, the designation of October 6th, 2022, as National Coaches Day to raise public awareness about the importance and significance that coaches play in the lives of millions of people in the United States. Whereas school bus drivers are required to undergo extensive training to improve their knowledge and skills as a way to ensure the safety and well-being of students. The position of a school bus driver requires tremendous responsibility in transporting Massachusetts students through inclement weather conditions and various traffic situations. Therefore, be it resolved that the Lunenburg School Committee proclaims February 22nd, 2022, to be Bus Driver Appreciation Day and strongly encourages all members of the community to join in personally expressing appreciation to our bus drivers for their dedication and devotion to their work. Whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department and that members of our department recognize their duty to serve the people to be, by safeguarding life and property, protecting them against violence and/or disorder, and protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. Therefore, be it resolved, proclaim, proclaim the week of May 11th, 2022, to be National Police Officers' Week. Adopted this 4th day of May, 2022, signed the Chair of Lunenburg School Committee.
So I would just ask that there be a vote to approve this and authorize the Chair to sign this and then we will send it out district-wide to all staff on your behalf.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Anthony. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ready for a roll call vote?
Mr. School and Brini?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
And Mr. Leighton?
Yes. Motion is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item in the agenda is a discussion, Bright Eyed Incorporated Information.
So I'll invite our Health and Safety Officer, Mrs. Katie McGuire, to give you an overview of a new organization in town that is going to be able to provide supports to our students and families. So I'll turn it over to you, Mrs. McGuire. You should have the capability to screen share. Or I can screen share for you?
Oh, no. Here we go. And.
Well, just make a notation here that the slides that you're about to see were provided by Bright Eyed Founder, Mr. Herbert, who is, I believe, in attendance this evening. So thank you very much. And I'll turn it over to you now, Mrs. McGuire.
All right. So just a, you know, little history. For any of you who are not aware, Kylie's Care Kits for Kids was founded in 2012 by Kylie McComber. She's a girl, a woman now from Lemonster. She noticed that kids didn't seem like they had enough food going home for the weekend and she was very concerned about the kids who got lunch at school and then she started this supplement, you know, food that would go home with the kids on Friday and they would have some non-perishable items to take home with them to have for over the weekend. So it grew in servicing almost 500 kids now in the Lemonster, Lunenburg and other communities in this area. So at this point Kylie is now a sophomore at Bentley. And I'm not sure what's happening with Kylie's overall, but Chris Herbert, as you can see, and his team have worked very hard over the last 10 months to start taking over the Lunenburg part of the Kylie's Care Kits. They have, let me just get my, make sure I had the right notes. They've worked very hard, registered as a corporation with the Secretary of State, received their 501(c)(3) tax exempt public charity status from the IRS and their tax ID. And they have registered with the Attorney General's Office and have received their certificate for solicitation. While all of this was in the process, they were continuing to distribute Kylie's Care Kits to the Lunenburg students through Kylie's. They were just doing all of that, that legwork, putting the kits together, dropping them off at the schools. So they've also put together a website and I can share that with you all later. They're, right now for in Lunenburg, they're currently providing 26 students, Lunenburg students with Care Kits. Each kit contains five meals and snacks and they're distributed weekly. Some things that the group is considering in the future are clothing for children who need this type of support, hygiene kits and something for the beginning of the school year, some back to school kits. They're looking for, you know, forward to doing some fundraising through the local businesses, looking into possible, possibly some support through the Lunenburg Public Schools to the students. Things like the World Hunger Task Force may be partnering with them and National Honor Society. So all of these things were hoping to get going and solicit for private donations. So in the process of putting all of this together, let me just roll to the next one so you can see a little bit more. In the process of putting all this together, there is a board of directors now. And the school nurses have been invited to serve on this board. And Dr. Burnham checked with our legal counsel, wanted to make sure that there was no conflict of interest with the school nurses serving on this board. So there, without any financial interest involved, there are no apparent conflicts of interest with the school nurses sitting on the board of a nonprofit that provides services to the school and no disclosures would be required. He, this, I'm sorry, it's a woman that I think who's the legal counsel. I didn't want to use the long term. I think the council said that the school nurses continue to act in a professional capacity. They identified with, okay, sorry, back this up. As school nurses, they'll act in a professional school nurse capacity. Identifying students who might benefit from the receiving these Care Kits, provide the information about the program to the parents or guardians and then provide the information release forms. This is how we've been doing this all along. So that's as the school nurse role. As members of the board, they will not act as an agent of the school while conducting any board activity, communicate via personal email, not through school email. In any fundraising, and I think Dr. Burnham, I'm going to have, make sure I'm correct with this. Any fundraising, I think, done within the district has to be approved. And so that was something, obviously, you know, any fundraising would be approved in the usual manner and the nurses would not act as school nurses soliciting funds. So I hope that all makes sense. I'm going to just go ahead and stop the share. And let me know if you have any questions. Oh goodness.
Any committee member have any questions or comments? I think this is a great. I want to thank the Bright Eyes Incorporated for stepping up and doing this, getting the 501(c)(3). This is important for our community and maybe for the work that they put in for this. I did have concern about this. It seems like it's a with the conflict of interest potential and the guidelines for the nurses, it may be a good idea to update the nurses, say annually, about their roles and responsibilities for what they can and can't do.
Yes. Dr. Burnham, can you stop my share? I'm not sure what, I've lost that. You know, the thing you click on, I can't seem to see it. Oh, I found it.
Okay.
Sorry, couldn't find it. Okay, I definitely will, I could do that for sure. Make sure that this is something that will make this part of the process.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? So looking at the agenda as a discussion, I don't know if there's any vote needed for this.
If I could just know one more thing, this is something we've, that the nurses, we've just been so happy that, you know, to provide this service for the kids and we're just so happy that someone in the community, our community stepped up to take over and we're really, really excited about some of these other things that, you know, we're hoping to do in the future, just some other supports for some of our students in need. Not just the food insecurity piece, but you know, hygiene products and food. This is just something kind of really near and dear to our hearts. So we're so, so thankful for Chris and his team to step up and do this.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for the extra information too, because I was going to ask, like, I think whenever we have new organizations, new ideas, it's, you gotta go and see how, how can we make it better? And I think you really took a look at that and really are going to make some good improvements to the program. So that's exciting. Thank you, Chris, also bringing on tonight.
There's no action required. We just wanted to make you aware. As you had been aware that we were accepting support from Kylie's. Now we're transitioning to a different organization and we just wanted to keep you updated that our students are receiving that, that kind of support and we are truly grateful.
Thank you. All right, moving on. The next item in the agenda is the discussion on the communication survey results.
So we conducted a communication survey and I have to say, I'm, I'm really quite pleased with the participation as well as the information that we were able to take away from, from this survey. So let me see if I can. Knowing that my advanced slide issue pops up every meeting, I'm just going to leave the screen this way so that I can just pull up slides one at a time. So we looked at this through, you know, the lens of what information are we hoping to learn so that we can figure out what's working well and figure out what we might need to do to improve communications home with our families. So the first set of questions focused on the classroom level. We also focused on a school level, a district level, and also got some information in this survey as well for communications about school committee. So we'll start with the classroom. We learned through this survey that the frequency of communication with a classroom teacher, 51% said that that communication was occasional. But 27% said that that communication was weekly. Certainly there are conversations that we can have about how to make that communication frequency a little bit more consistent across teachers and classrooms. We asked who initiated the communication and most often it was the teacher. Or second most often would be the parent. Fewer communications were initiated through guidance or the principal or others. We asked when the communication was initiated by a family, what was the response time? And almost 57% say that they got a response the same day, another 20% say it was within the next day. Again, I think that there's some conversations to be had so that we can make sure that response times, you know, become a little bit more consistent. And we can also communicate back to families about the expectation of a timely response. We asked families, what are those most frequent topics of communication? And you can see that most often it's around performance or progress or concerns about a student. Absence, tardies and dismissals is also another frequent response that we got through the survey. And there's a variety of others that were put forward for us as well. Regarding school level communication, what was the frequency of communication with your child's school? 60, almost 68% said weekly, which is interesting because I know for a fact that our principals send out a weekly communication. So I'm, I'm a little bit perplexed by the 25% who said that there's an occasional communication. So maybe we weren't really, I don't know, maybe we weren't clear about what it means to have communication from the school. So maybe that was just a flaw in the question, the way the question was phrased. We did ask for folks to identify which school their, their children were attending so that we can take this data and break it out by school so that conversations can be had and principals can reflect upon their communication practices as well as getting some more detailed feedback. At the school level, we also asked who initiates this communication. 75% say it's, it's coming from the principal. So if that's consistent with the percentage of the weekly communication in the previous question. We asked how often they accessed our school website, so not the district website, but the school website. And 54% responded that that's occasional. 23% said monthly and another 17% said weekly. This is information that's really helpful because we've been talking about the fact that our website has been getting a little bit too full of information and you have to scroll for some length here to, to find what you're looking for. And it is not always easy to find what you're looking for. So we had intended to solicit this feedback and we do intend to streamline the website. So relative to the ease of navigation, one being extremely difficult and five being easy, you can see that the easy is the purple and that's almost 13%. Whereas nearly 36% rated it a four and 33% rated it a three. We asked if they'd ever sought out events and other information from the calendar that's posted on the website and 52% said yes, they had. 27% said sometimes and nearly 22% said no, they, they don't seek out information from that calendar on the website. We asked what kinds of information are they seeking most often when they go to the website? Most of the comments came back that they're looking for information on the school calendar, events, different announcements. Many look to the website to find the lunch menu. And the other very frequent piece of feedback we got was that they, they go to the website to look for staff directory. So how to contact individuals, whether that be a phone line or an email address. Do you find the principal's weekly emails helpful? And 75% said that they do. And we asked if Zoom parent guardian meetings have been helpful and about 50% said that they are. And another 37% said sometimes they are. We again have what kinds of information are you seeking on the website? District communication. Which modes of communication have you found helpful? So apparently the emails have been very helpful. Some of those robo calls that we make are also helpful. Information about a delay, cancellation or some type of emergency information is also valued by the parents as well. This was interesting to me. How often would you prefer to receive district communication? And 53% indicated they would like a weekly communication. And then another 20% said a bi-weekly, 24% say that monthly communication is good. We can discuss this some more because there's a rationale for why I don't communicate weekly. But we can come back and discuss that at the end of the slides. Are you satisfied with the amount of communication coming from the district? And nearly 62% said that they were. And another 34% said that they were somewhat satisfied. Perhaps if there were weekly communications, some of the 34% would be in the yes camp. We asked what type of communication tool they would prefer to view for updated information. They do like the highlights and spotlights. They do appreciate the letters, the update letters that I've been sending out through our COVID two years of school. And they do appreciate those school messenger district updates. We asked how often they visit the district website. And nearly 46% said a few times a year, another 29% visit monthly. And there were 18% that never go to look at the district website. Maybe because it's too much information. We'll have to streamline and see if we improve those ratings. Do you find those Zoom parent guardian forms with the superintendent helpful? And I guess it probably depends on the topic. 32% said yes and another 45% said sometimes. And we asked what they look for most when they go to the district website. And again, the information is very consistent. They're looking at calendars and events. They're looking for school information, athletics information, staff directory. They're looking for school information, athletics information, staff directory. So that, that information is consistent with the information we got from the school level. Then we asked some questions about school committee communication. And we asked, where do you currently seek out school committee information? And sixty-four percent said that they, they look in their email. As, you know, we started the practice this year of emailing the agenda for our school committee meetings out on Mondays. And the reason that we send it out on Mondays is because that's when those agendas are posted at town hall. So once it's posted, we send it out to all of our families. They are looking at Facebook. So your Facebook page is, is getting some appreciation here, about twenty-four percent. Another eighteen percent do look at the district website for the school committee page for some information. And then others are going directly to the town website to find agendas and minutes. We asked what kind of information they are looking to find on a website relative to school committee. And nearly seventy-three percent replied that they're looking for those school committee agendas. Twenty percent said they look for budget information. Another thirty percent almost said that they are looking for the documents that are shared and discussed at school committee meetings. And another twenty-seven percent go to find school committee policy. We asked if they had viewed the roles and responsibilities of the school committee series. So those videos that Carol Ashambo recorded through the PAC studio that were played on cable television and that are also located on the website and on the, the school committee Facebook page. And almost eighty-two percent said no, they, they hadn't viewed those. So we can certainly discuss whether or not you'd like me to put those links to all of those videos into an email and send that email out on your behalf. We indicated that this year we modified the way school committee information is communicated for easier public access. And we asked if that's been helpful, and sixty-one percent say yes. And another thirty-three percent say it has been somewhat helpful. We asked if it was helpful to have these presentations that are delivered during your school committee meetings posted on the website. And again, another sixty-two percent said yes, in fact, that is helpful. And another twenty-seven said somewhat helpful. We asked about attendance at meetings. Only fifteen percent responded that they have attended in person. Seventy, almost seventy-nine percent say that they've attended via a Zoom link. Another almost twenty-four percent say they watch through Facebook. And another twenty-three, twenty-four percent say that they view on public cable access. We asked the frequency of their attendance at meetings. And almost forty-five percent say they never attend a meeting. And almost fifty percent say that they attend occasionally. So in addition to this, there was an open field where those who did complete the survey were able to provide some feedback about what sorts of things they thought would be improvements that we could make. So I am definitely going to be digging into all of that feedback with my team to see what types of adjustments we can make immediately versus what types of adjustments we would look to make for the next school year. And I did provide the feedback and comments for you all as well so that, you know, you could give some consideration to any changes you may or may not want to make based on the feedback that came back for school committee. And that's all I have for you on the survey at this point.
Thank you, Dr. Burnham. I'll open up to the committee for any questions, comments, discussion. I just had a couple notes. I think the communication consistency with the, the staff. I think that it's interesting too, because I feel like high school versus elementary school, it might be a different consistency. Like for my elementary school student, I get the weekly emails. I think that makes sense at the elementary school level. As a high school teacher myself, I, I'll, I'll send out a, an email over the term. Just an overview of what we've done for the, for the term. So I think that's something probably maybe at school by school that you guys could look at maybe with the principal. I don't, I don't think it would make sense to put in the contract, but maybe it's like a staff handbook type thing that they could discuss and have consistency. I also saw, I, I saw the word occasionally and I just, I thought people might misinterpret occasionally, and maybe there's a tweaking of the survey and just changing the word occasionally to something different. In regards to the website, I thought maybe we could use that to our advantage of we, we know what people are looking for so we can make that visible. But also, we can make stuff that we want to share with them also visible near that. And I think maybe we can use that to our advantage of knowing what they want, but also knowing how to get information to them that we want to. I did see in the comments, you had talked about the comments, somebody asked about like a summary about the school committee meetings. And I thought, hey, that's the actual minutes. Maybe we could post the minutes. So I'm going to bring that up to Laura. Maybe we can even post on the Facebook page the minutes, even though they're later, later on, weeks later, but I think it's still people would want that quick summary where they can read it and not watch a two-hour YouTube video of the meeting. So that might be more useful.
I do believe that Liz has been, when we do approve minutes, that she goes back into the, the meeting that they came from to drop them in, but I can verify that.
Yeah, and I think if, even if it's a post on Facebook, people then can can see it right away and just go right to it rather than trying to search it out too. And I don't know if it makes sense to put it in the emails, like the monthly emails either. I thought too, when you mentioned the roles and responsibilities videos, so that we could also post those on, on Facebook. I don't think those are posted on Facebook, so we could do that too.
Would you like me to send those out as one email, all, all the links?
Add that in my notes. We could discuss that. Sophie or Anthony, if you had any thoughts on that, the, the links to the roles and responsibilities that Carol had made, those videos.
Yeah, I think it would be great to send those out to families because I think, right, I think it's one of those that maybe it's a little counterintuitive to find. But I think if people actually got the email, it might make them want to watch it more than having to go find it themselves.
Anthony, any thoughts?
The, I, you know, like, I think that if, based on the attendance that we had for the mask mandate session, like people are definitely interested in what we're doing. But I do think that people don't know what it is. Because, so I've, I've only, let me see how many meetings I've attended. My first meeting was on January fifth. We've only had two public comments, if you exclude the, the, the mask mandate one. And the two public comments were really not things that we were like talking about or like things that we were necessarily, the one was the kid who was like in his like Twitch setup and he had his microphone. And he was like very clearly advocating for a, an athletic trainer. And he did an excellent job. Like I, that kid was ready. And then the other one was a parent, a mother, and she had concerns about the fact that her son was like, you know, uh, above average in the class, but was being, and, but neither of those things were necessarily on the agenda. And it wasn't clear how we could address them. And so I think that both of those examples showed me that like, people, I think, want us to do something different than what we do. Like, they want us to, they want like that, come forward with the problem, us address the problem, and then be done. But like, that, I don't think that's necessarily how this deliberative body works. Because sometimes we don't have the authority or like that issue has already been settled. The mom who had the concerns about the class, like, the curriculum is set, my understanding from Dr. Burnham's materials, especially when we were going through the materials for the superintendent's evaluation. It looks like the, the curriculum is set at least a year in advance. I mean, if not more than that. So like, we didn't have the ability to do that. I think that if those videos, like, where Carol explains things clearly, like Carol could have like a whole series about life things called Carol Explains Things Clearly. But I think that she, those videos would be really helpful to giving people a sense of like what they can do and what we can do when there are issues. And like the mask mandate one, like that was really well teed up. Like everything was sort of lined up and people had really good comments. And I, I, I will tell you, like, I think those comments changed my position. Because like I had come in with this sort of understanding and, and the parents made really good points. Like I remember one lady saying like, you know, at some point we just have to trust each other because we all live together in the same community. And that was sort of the thing that made me think like, yeah, that's right. And so when those things are teed up correctly and people understand what we're doing and how we do it, I think it works really well, like really, really well. So I do think that we should figure out a way to get that information to people, whether it's sending it as an email or like, you know, one idea would be like in sending out a general email that's like, you have issues that you want to talk about with the school committee. Get an idea of how it works and how to best get your message heard and action taken. Watch these, watch these videos with Carol. And like I said, I think Carol should, should, Carol should have a podcast called Carol Explains Things Clearly. Because like, when we went to the meeting where we got nominated to be on the scoreboard, she explained like who everybody was, and it was really helpful. So she's very good at, I mean, she was a teacher, so, right? Like, that's what she does. She's very good at explaining. So I think that would be really, really helpful if we gave them like, here are your, here's your toolkit to fix the thing you want fixed. Right? Maybe not say like, go watch these videos. Because I think if, if you get like another video or another email saying to go watch videos, I don't know about you guys, but I got like bombarded by these. And it's just like, okay, I, I, I don't know what, which ones are priority. But if you, if you sell it to the, the public for what it is, as like your toolkit to get your voice heard and action taken, I think that might motivate people to get more engaged. So I definitely think it should be brought up.
Thank you, Anthony. I, I, I think we're all in the same consensus that I think the more information that the public hears about our goals and responsibilities, the, the better off we're going to be too. So I think, yeah, I don't think we need to vote for it, but I think it makes sense to share that with the public through the superintendent. We can also share it through the Facebook page too, those videos.
And just as a point of information, we've also been working to articulate a chain of communication. And where's your entry point if you've got a question, concern that you, that you'd like an answer or you would like to have addressed? And we've broken it down into different categories of question and information. And started step one, this is your first go-to, then step two, if you're not resolved, step three, and so on. So when people have questions around curriculum, you know, and the challenge for their student that they believe is advanced beyond grade level curriculum. There, there are people that are your go-to to, to have those conversations. So we've been working on that and our intention is to incorporate them that, that outline in the school handbooks this year, as well as post it on the district website and the school websites. So hopefully that will help as well.
I think it might even be a good idea to, to get into the principals newsletters too at the beginning of the year. So it's a repetitive thing that they're, they're seeing every year. Great. Any other questions, comments, discussion on this item? All right, seeing none, the next item on the agenda is old business, the ESR grant budget update.
So I'll turn this over to Mr. Cassidy.
Evening everyone, Mike Cassidy, business manager. So tonight, looking at the calendar, we had targeted this date as a proposal for an amendment to the, the ESR funds based upon some projections which I'll, I'll show shortly. I didn't realize two committee members were not going to be here, so if it's, if it's the will of the committee, I'll, I'll do the presentation tonight. We'll put the information on our website for public comment and then add it to the next agenda. But I'll, I'll be happy to explain the information that's going on our website to the public so they know what they're looking at and, and what we're, what our recommendation is with, with the surplus funds. So once again, this document, along with the memorandum that the school committee has, I, I believe it's already been posted online to the public has access to it. This page is basically our current expenditure summary out of the two ESR grants as of last Friday. Everything seems to be on target. So let's discuss ESR two first. That's the, the five hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollar budget grant that we received. So this is what ESR two looks like based upon our projections in, in the previous sheet. These totals, here are the, the activities, the salaries, the supplies that, that make up that amount. And, and these are projections for the, for the whole grant, not necessarily this year, but the combined two years that the grant is going to be funding things. So as you know, we don't have this math specialist yet. That's something that we're planning on hiring next year. And we're projecting that salary to be the seventy-five thousand. The targeted math position, that's a two-year commitment for that individual at the high school. Same with the social worker at the middle school. So these are the projected salaries for the two years. Here's our, in what we originally submitted the grant with Dussie. Here are the, the, the budget amounts. But, and at the time, we had some of the positions hired and we didn't have some of the positions hired. So we just budgeted what we, we thought, you know, the applicants would be coming in as. So that's why we have some surplus money in some of these accounts. The, the targeted math position, we, we hired a, a, a younger math teacher who's, who's working out great, but that, that because it's a lower salary that, that, that we hired her at, that's why we have the surplus funds. Going to the next category, which is non-instructional support salaries. And that includes our summer school, our after-school tutoring program and our computer techs. And work our way up, which is the two computer, the, the technicians, the IT technicians, and they're part-time. We're funding them for two years. And I'm sure, just if we keep the current projections, there'll be some, there'll be some funds available. And we're not offering our summer school program over the next two years. So there's surplus money in that account. And it's important to note that some of these summer school funds originally were, were budgeted out of this grant. But the district got two separate and distinct grants that covered the summer school program from last year, which actually freed up more money to spend in this grant. Contracted services, that's a consultant to help us with our math evaluations. That's a two-year service contract at seventy-five hundred dollars each. So we did a good job with that one. The next one, the stipends. And at the time of the submission, the nurse supervisor, we were hoping COVID was dying down, but it seemed to accelerate at the, at the beginning of the year. uh, dying down, but it seemed to accelerate uh, at the, at the beginning of the year. And her responsibilities really increased. And uh, we, we went back to her original stipend, which was thirteen thousand dollars a year instead of the five. So that we've got a little deficit there. And same with the math specialist. That stipend increased uh, based upon the um, the collective bargaining agreement. And finally fringe benefits. So uh, this grant will pay for the, the uh, um, MTRS retirement benefit. And I, I recommend not touching that amount until we hire the math targeted math position uh, in the first line item. Does anyone have any questions on this particular grant and a- any of the projected? The, the title said projected surplus, it should say projected surplus and deficit. Uh, because we do have a couple deficits at this time. Any questions?
My question would be, what is your plan for the projected surplus?
Well, if I, I can address that right now because right now, uh, what we are proposing is uh, and once again, this is in the memorandum that is on the website. Uh, is to reallocate sixty thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars to fund the guidance counselor at the primary school for another year. Uh, that position uh, was uh, partly funded uh, probably like uh, three fourths of the year, um, maybe, maybe even more. Uh, but uh, that, that, that position has proved valuable. And with the surplus funds, we'd like to uh, reallocate some of the, the resources to continue that FTE. And then in addition, we're looking to move eight thousand from that, the, the after-school program or line item into the nurse supervisor line to cover that, that stipend amount. So those are the two recommendations. At this, at this time, we'll talk about ESR three in a minute. We're not recommending any shifts in ESR three. All we're looking at is ESR two, which expires at the end of next year. In allocating, uh, infirming up this budget. So we, we have a solid spending plan for next school year. So that is on the table uh, for the school committee. ESR three is a little more complicated. We've got a lot more positions. It's a larger budget. Um, once again, this, these are three-year projections. So uh, uh, the, so the math specialist will be in the third year. Uh, the guidance counselor at the middle high school will be, that's a three-year projection. So there's a little money left in that. Uh, the intervention specialist, that's a three-year projection, that one fifty-two. And the social worker at Turkey Hill, that's a three-year projection. And the social worker at the middle school, that's in year three. That's a year three uh, salary. Tutors, not, not my best way of presenting this data. But there, there has been some turnover in some of the positions. So we're funding four positions over uh, over the four-year period. So um, you know, it, it just kind of shows uh, some people, what we've paid people and um, just the balance. So I'd not a lot of money there to, as of yet. Contracted services, we're looking at um, uh, support in professional development. Uh, we have a, a general supply account. And once again, uh, we, so there's some money there that hasn't been allocated yet. And we, we would imagine that would be going to some cur- uh, curriculum projects and or uh, after-school support as well, because we didn't have a uh, supply account to support the after-schools uh, yeah, money in ESR two. Uh, behavioral uh, health coordinator, that's a three-year stipend. And the grant manager, that's a two-year stipend. And then finally fringe benefits. So that it's, th- this grant holds uh, or allows the district to spend money uh, for the, the MTRS portion, uh, the retirement portion of eligible positions. And also insurance. So uh, we projected higher in the insurance, right? Currently we only have one person uh, in, in the insurance program. So uh, once, so there could be some changes as open enrollment comes. So that, that money, that amount could change over the next three years. So that, so what, what the, this report does, it gives you what we've spent this year so far on the ESR grants. And it gives projections as uh, financial projections as, as we see it in the business office. Uh, this information will be uh, posted on, is posted online. I, I know that uh, finance committee usually has a lot of questions around ESR and what's being, what, what it's being spent on it. Uh, with the, the permission of the committee, I'd like to send them a copy just so they know uh, what the money is being spent on. And, and what I'm recommending uh, is to delay any action until uh, the full committee is here next, God willing, the full committee is here next uh, in two weeks. And perhaps we get some public comments on the, the proposed changes. So I'll, I'll turn it back to the chair. If anyone has any questions, I, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any committee member have any questions or comments? Um, my only comment was just, uh, again, I, I appreciate the, the work on this and the presentation, I think just continuous um, transparency and keeping the committee and the public aware of um, what we're spending our money on, what these grant funds on, that it's supporting our students, which we can clearly see um, in the slides. And also that we're, we're being effective with the money that we're actually going to spend all the grant money and um, the projections are that we're going to use all the funding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so we'll table this for a future meeting. Next item in the agenda.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy. Uh, next item of the agenda is the public comment. Turn it over to public comment, um, from the public. So any public comment from the public? Just raise your hand or raise your virtual hands for. I have um, Amy, Amy's iPhone.
Hi, Brian. Um, this is Amy King, Three Gapes Place in Lunenburg. And I got on a little late, so I, I think I missed some of the rules set for public comment. On, in the last meeting, there was a discussion about updating the facilities policy related to the snack shack. And it was commented that if there were a need for a special event, that it would be addressed with the school committee um, for a special event item. Um, I, Dr. Burnham probably hasn't seen the email that I sent her yet this afternoon because it was sent relatively late and she was probably prepping for this meeting. But we do have a potential request for a special event permit that would allow us to um, for the resale of pizza. And so my request here is just that we um, that the school committee consider when, when Dr. Burnham and, and the track group can get together to discuss the details of if we were to be able to get a temporary food permit from the board of health and have the appropriately certified personnel available um, to oversee that resale. Would we be able to get the, the policy um, approval to sell the pizza in the snack shack? What we're looking to do is there is a very large district track meet as well as a league meet in a couple of weeks in May. And we're working with Dr. Burnham and um, and the board of health to see what we could arrange to, to try to get some hot food sold to people. I know the policy itself specifically states only prepackaged items. And they, they talked about the fact that you guys could have a waiver for a one-time event.
Thank you. Uh, Stephanie, you can state your name and your address, please.
Hi, my name's Stephanie Algarin and my address is eleven twelve Mass Ave. Um, and I am questioning on March sixteenth, we had a meeting regarding transportation and we were supposed to visit items about um, if we were going to have um, the strict policy of no students under one point five miles. And that was supposed to be according to the meeting minutes um, back in April. And then I reviewed the meeting minutes from April. And that was not addressed. And I would like to know when that would be addressed.
Thank you, Stephanie. Is there any additional public comment from the public? Seeing no other additional hands up. Any public comment from the committee? All right, seeing none, move on to the next item of the agenda is reports. Uh, first is athletic advisory committee. We are meeting in June. We have not met. Uh, next item of the agenda is our finance committee. Carol, um, next is PTO. You have any update from PTO? School councils, I know the primary school is going to be meeting on Monday. Anyone for Turkey Hill Middle School or High School?
Um, the high school had our last meeting. Oh, sorry to interrupt you, Tony. Um, okay, um. Uh, the high school had our last meeting of the year on Monday. Um, let me find the document. Okay, um, the handbook committee met on the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth. Um, the teachers, parents administration were a part of the committee. There was no student. But um, the committee did ask for feedback about subtle changes. Um, there were updates about non-discrimination disclosures. The health office updated the immunization policy. And um, the grading policy with the pencil F was put into the permanent handbook. Um, the dress code was also changed. Um, well, not the code itself, but um, the language surrounding the dress code was changed to remove some examples of inappropriate attire that tend to be gender biased. Um, testing is underway. Um, AP tests were starting this week and they'll be going through the thirteenth. Math MCAS is going to be mid-May and bio is going to be the beginning of June. Um, they're going to continue having administration proctoring instead of rotating teachers. Um, we had a student schedule update. Um, so the administration is ahead of schedule and making the high school student schedules. Um, they're hoping to be able to balance, to better balance class sizes with the extra time that they'll have this year. And they will release schedules to students in mid-June. Additionally, on the topic of schedules, um, the high school is um, considering allowing half-days for high school students on the days that they have finals, so that they can have time to uh, go outside, hang out with friends, whatever, before um, they have to buckle down and study for the evening also, so that teachers can get some prep work done during that time. Um, Dr. Burnham already gave us the end of year rundown for the seniors. Very exciting. Congratulations. And that was all I had.
Sophie, Anthony?
The middle school or the, uh, yeah, the middle schools meeting was the day of the last school board meeting and there was like a big shuffle and I don't think anybody got there and I still couldn't figure out what happened. So uh, I, I'm trying to piece together, but I don't, I don't imagine it has anything to do other than like MCAS, because that's all my son has been talking about. So.
Thanks. Uh, next is capital planning committee. We have not met. Wellness advisory committee?
We have not met.
Next is Paccel. That, uh, Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee. We were scheduled for a meeting on Monday, but the agenda did not get posted in time. So we did not meet. Uh, we'll be meeting in the near future. Uh, lifelong learning committee?
We have not met.
Policy subcommittee?
I do not believe the policy subcommittee has met.
MASC workshop report. Anyone have anything to share on MASC reports? Alright, so we'll keep looking out for the, more of those, some upcoming too. Uh, topics for future discussion. We have engaging parents, Turkey Hill Elementary and insecticides. Additional topics for future discussion. Carol?
Uh, hi, yes. Um, I just wanted to report that I had looked into the insecticide. The status of that insecticide bill and um, I contacted Representative Kishmarik's office. And they told me that that bill is still in process. So it would not be too late to talk about that bill. So we probably do need to put it on um, a future agenda. Um, probably fairly quickly because the legislative session only lasts so long. And um, the other thing that she did tell me was that the representative and his wife have welcomed a baby boy. So congratulations to them.
Thank you. Other future agenda items? Anthony, I don't know if you wanted to have a discussion on the topic.
Yeah, so.
Have to have a discussion now, but what would you like to see on the agenda?
Just to put it on a future agenda, um, one of the things that I've noticed is that the time between public comment and when we start has been very long. And I've also noticed that some of the comment, or the meetings have been very long. Um, I will tell you that last meeting when Laura uh, asked to read the policy, I had been like, I was done and I feel bad that I was done, but I'm hopeful that we can condense the meeting times so that we can all be more attentive. Or I can be more attentive because it seems like everybody else is pretty attentive. And also um, so that we can encourage public participation. I think that every meeting that we've had, except for excluding the mask mandate one, which I think was like a special case, has been at least three hours and more than, more than one have been four hours. And I think that four hours starting at six or seven is just not something that I think people can handle. I mean, I, I, you know, like I, I basically try to eat while I'm in between votes here. And it, it does not seem ideal for um, good discussion or public participation.
Yeah, I think it would be a good idea to add a, a discussion component to our next meeting or future meeting uh, where we can discuss efficiencies and, and our procedures.
Okay, thank you.
Future agenda item, sorry.
Question, did that be um, at the first meeting in June? Because that way, if, at our next meeting, if we set up how that works and so, you know, something happens in the election that the committee changes, then we would be setting up something for people that are um, not on the committee. So I would suggest that we wait until after the election to make that change.
I would suggest that, I would suggest that the chair decides when to put it on the agenda.
This Carol explains things simply yet again.
And then possibly a future agenda item, uh, whether it's an update on the transportation and also um, reviewing the sale of pizza potentially. Reviewing policy there for food.
So I'll just offer this, I, I will offer this comment on timing. Um, if there's going to be a special permit for the event on May fourteenth, that's happening before your next scheduled meeting. So if we can manage to pull something together where there, there could be a special permit, uh, we're likely going to have to schedule a special meeting just to take that vote.
We've done that in the past. Any other future agenda items? All right, seeing none, I'll look for a motion to adjourn at eight thirty-one PM. Sophie?
I'll make a motion to adjourn at eight thirty-one PM.
Thank you. Any discussion? Alright, I think we're ready for the vote.
Mr. Schoenbrini?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Arshambo?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Leighton?
Yes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good night.